Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Douglas Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, April, uh, sorry, August 5th, 2025. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, underneath the chairman's announcements, I just want to highlight the fact that this Saturday, we've got the Soldiers' Field event, starting at 6:30 PM to 10:00, and that it's also a tax-free weekend in Massachusetts, comes once time, one time a year, so you can preorder from some businesses and let them process your tax-free savings, so hopefully people get a chance to get out and do that. Underneath Citizens' Quorum, is there anything that's not on any of our agenda that anybody wishes to talk about? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, just a little add to your announcement of EFS.
Yep.
Thing, the ballgame starts at 3:00, and if people want to
Oh, good highlight.
That, or go down to see it, I think they're allowed to do that, too.
Yeah.
Invite it to, invite it down to
Yeah.
3:00, if there is a ballgame.
Yep, 3:00 ballgame, and then the movie is, I believe, targeting about 8:00 or so. Yep, so, oh, I forgot about the ballgame, I forgot about the exhibition, so that'd be great for people to come out. Thanks for the reminder, Ross. Okay, can I entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the Douglas Public Library? And the entertainment license?
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, do we have anybody here wishing to speak on this?
Come on up, Don. Yeah, that's, that's, let's speak for, come on up, and Kate, Kate the artist.
Yes, so again, Don Fontaine and Kate Anderson from the library trustees.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, I don't have anything to hand out, I just have notes. So do you want me to start, or do you want to ask questions?
Sure, just give us the 10,000-foot view of
Okay, sure, so I think we're in pretty good shape, we were checking registrations roughly in the 200 neighborhood.
Excellent.
Depending on if people who are interested in the event versus if anybody's been double counted from Facebook versus the registrations, but it's looking pretty good. The three, we have three food trucks now, so there's a lemonade tent, Smash Burgers, and Fox and Crumpet out of Worcester. Fox and Crumpet went to the Board of Health and the Fire Department today to get their approval, they're waiting, they're checking one thing, so we'll know tomorrow for sure, but the other two are approved, as I understand it. So, let's see. And the Boston Audio Rentals, who are doing the whole audio visuals all set up, we've got a 33-foot screen, they're also bringing a wired microphone, a laptop, will burn a DVD, so we can either show photos from the filming of the movie, and/or like baseball trailers, the trailer from EFS, other things that are related to that. We tried to get something from Douglas's baseball, but didn't really succeed unless someone has a cache altogether, which is going to happen in three days. So as you guys were talking earlier, so we're, I think, you know, we've got a pretty good, we've kind of papered the town pretty good, so with the game from like 3:00 to 6:00, where we expect about 20-something people have signed up for that, and then the 30 people from the, about 30 people are coming from the movie casting crew.
That's cool.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, so for that part, we'll maybe have a little bit of an audience, but most of the festivities are going to start more like at 6:30, the food trucks will line up. Fox and Crumpet said they'd come a little bit earlier, like around 5:00, so I thought maybe if, you know, some people on the, if the baseball game was petering out, they would have a chance to eat and get a beverage. And the folks from the film, Omnisc films, invited the Boston Metro Baseball League, other people might know that better than me. And then Brad Hall from the Douglas Tigers is coming. So, anyway, I wasn't familiar, but someone else may be, and so they're, they're gonna, they're sending some umpires over as well. Yeah.
We're learning a lot about baseball last week.
Yeah, exactly.
Don, this is a great kind of review, and we spitballed a little bit on some things. I think it's, and I'll be down there, but parking for the baseball game
Yeah.
will be really important, because that'll set the stage for how the rest of the operation goes.
Right. So So the casting crew will be there first, and, you know, we'll, we've got, the Highway Department are bringing sawhorses to kind of cordon off the food trucks along the tree line, and then we'll have, and they're also bringing some parking cones on Friday to, you know, start to get that, we'll start to get that area set up. So I'm going to run over there on Friday, use my vast knowledge of parking, to get it set up. And we've got three Boy Scouts from 316 who are willing to help out, and I think Tim has someone from the, one of the teenagers from the baseball league who's, who can help out as well. So we can get the, get a lineup, like three rows or so on the field there, and then we also have approval from Jackman's, I just need to double-check, they didn't have a last-minute funeral, but they've given us approval, Unibank has given us approval, the library, of course, and on the backside of Webster First have all given approval for parking. The, I talked to the chief of police, and he offered to send a cruiser, as long as it's not an emergency at that time. So basically around 6:30 when people are arriving, and then around 10:00 when people are leaving, they'll just go around and make sure everything looks good. In addition, we've talked to Fire and the CERT, they have at least one CERT volunteer who can help out with parking on that, on that day. They also have a call-out for a couple other people, but at the moment, there's just, so we've got, again, three Boy Scouts who are teenagers, another teen from baseball, and a CERT person, so that's, so we've got five. And then various library volunteers and other people from the group who, who can help out as needed. So, again, we've got some of the activities going on, so if we don't need them for parking, then we'll bring them over to help with some of the games. But we figured we would go with Unibank's parking first, because they've got like, I counted, at least 30 slots, plus they're on the same side of the road, so try to minimize people crossing, crossing the street.
Yeah, you may want to have like, the people that are working the event, or something like that, or helping support it, park there, and then come down, and then as people come in to Soldiers', like, have an estimated how many parking spaces, and then do like a counter, so then you, if you have 100 spaces, let's say
Yeah.
could at least say, okay, add about 95, or, you know, some safe number, like, oh, that's it.
It's not a bad idea.
You know what I mean?
People that know that are going to be there for a while, they should park north.
Yes, have them park a little bit further away. So I'm actually talking to the people from the movie tomorrow, so they'll be the first people there, I would expect. I'll probably head down there at 3:00 or a little before, and maybe have them park behind Uni, behind Webster First.
I don't want anyone to point out that I'll be hypocritical in that moment.
Oh, thank goodness you don't park there. Okay, so what else? Bathrooms should be all set up, we've got, the two bathrooms in the clubhouse are going to be open, another two porta-potties at least will be in the field, should have plenty of trash barrels, the various volunteers will be cleaning up, hopefully that night, if not, we'll, hopefully people are neat enough, they'll do it in the morning. People seem clear that they're bringing their own seats of some kind.
Like it's, or anything like that, and
Yeah.
coolers, or whatever else.
Right, right. What was I going to say? And then, there's also a face painter coming for some of our activities, so we're going to see where we can set her up. I'll make some signage, probably on the fly, because it's still a little bit organized chaos, right?
Yeah.
We're like, well, you know, we've got, we have an idea of how everything's going to work, we should have plenty of volunteers, but we're, might need a little bit, it's our first time doing this, like a little bit of directing people to where they're going to go, and making sure they know that there's things going on, there's no cost to it, that kind of information.
Yeah, if you guys did like a, like a planning meeting Thursday, or something like that, that kind of helps you kind of down there to figure out spaces and everything else, it kind of
Just another idea, two second, if you've got, if you've got the president's
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I would doubt it, almost a section of parking.
Yeah, or the library. Do you think Highway would have any signage, or, because there's like that usual, maybe we can print off even just like a handicapped slogan.
You can, you can do it, yeah, you can do it with cones and stuff like that, and just have it say, this is, this is handicap designated.
Okay, that's a good idea.
What time on Friday, were you planning to be there?
I can kind of be there anytime, so I just wanted to make, I was thinking the afternoon, just because I wanted the Highway that, I don't, they didn't know, say what time they were dropping off cones and such.
Okay.
But I figured afternoon would be on the same side.
So let's just plan on, you know, doing that, like, 3:00 Friday.
Okay, sounds good. I was going to say that, too, thank you. Yeah, it looks good, like 5% chance of rain, so, yeah, because at one point, when I was talking to the EFS folks last week, they, at that point, it was looking like a 30% chance of rain, and we're talking about having like a little tent if needed, so it doesn't look like we'll have to have any backup. We, the one thing that one of the library trustees brought up just this afternoon was for the, for the people who are going to be there at 3:00, is maybe having some kind of beverages for them, ideally, it would be something where the library could maybe make, like if they're buying them, say they're buying them at Walmart, or somewhere inexpensive, for a dollar apiece, and selling them for $2, and they're making a little bit, I don't know if there's any problem with that, it's more like a donation to the library. I don't know if it's going to all come together, but that was another possibility.
I think you'd have to check with the Board of Health and stuff like that, just to make sure it's okay, you know, I don't know if there's time, you know, but, but you know, the part of the big thing is, is, you know, I look at what the library's done with all the fundraising events, just having a, saying, hey, this is sponsored by the library trustees, and it's an open donation.
Yeah.
As they come into it, they can feel free to donate
As they come in.
And seating and stuff like that, and I think, you know, like, you know, Smash Burger's reasonably priced and stuff like that, and they offer water, so you don't want to try to cut into some of the food vendors that are already approved.
It was only going to be in that, like, during the game, that 3:00 to 6:00, before anybody else came, so.
Just the open donations, I think, when the event kicks off at 6:30 or
That 3:00 to 6:00 window, when the game is going on, and we're like, not expecting a big crowd there, but want to have, give them something if they can. And there's also that band playing, if you recall, they've got the band that's going on during the game, just from 3:00 to 6:00.
That's the whole thing.
Yeah.
The art.
They're called Good Deli. I don't know if anyone's a fan.
I don't know, that's, you know what I mean?
Oh, and
Members of Aerosmith.
Yeah, I know, right?
They played in Hope, they occupied in Mon, uh, High School.
In Worcester, too, right?
Yeah.
Lupus.
Lupus.
De Mont High School, yeah, Ross knows that? No, that's really
For a while, yeah, some of us know them.
Come from the Valley, that's great.
Yeah, and so, and we have a couple nice donations, so just today, Unibank donated 1,500, and Webster First donated 300, so we're actually, that's why he's all covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was good. Let's see, I think that's everything, there's, we've really got everything covered from Boston Audio Rentals, they're giving us a laptop to play the slideshow, they're giving us a wired mic, so we're kind of thinking, so, once we get in, like, in the half hour or so before the show starts, we would, well, we'd have the slideshow going on, depending on how long it goes, and if it all
Intimations and
together, as thought, you know, maybe like, you know, a reel from the movie, or other reels that the movie folks may have, other movies that they're promoting, something like that. Our own librarian is going to sing the National Anthem with his guitar, and then we'll have Bill Lee speak, either, we're not sure if he's got another event in the evening, if he's going to have to leave earlier, so he might be moved up, and then the director will do a little Q and A, I think, before the movie, and then right at the end.
Okay.
And
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
Done a good job.
Yep.
Thanks, yeah.
Knowing that everyone in Douglas knows about this, and hearing no one objects to it, we're glad to make a motion to approve the entertainment license for the library folks to put on the EFS screening Saturday.
All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? 3-0? Oh.
Oh, yeah, we didn't
Oh, sorry.
We said, where's Mike when we need him?
Exactly. Entertainer motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public meeting has been made.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just formality, I will do it again, I make a motion that we approve the entertainment license presented in our packets tonight for Soldier's Field's EFS event on Saturday.
Yep, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 3-0. Okay?
All right, thanks, everyone.
You appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'll reach out tomorrow, Don, when the licenses are
Okay, great.
Good night.
All right. All right, we have a remote, okay, the next item on the agenda is the town property use of Soldier's Field for the Mudville Baseball Club.
Good evening.
And a few folks online joining us, could you just introduce yourself for the minute-taker?
Yeah, my name is John Shanahan, and I'm the founder of the Mudville Baseball Club, which is a vintage baseball team based out of Holliston, and with me is our captain, Angelo Gomato. Hey, everyone, nice to meet you, thank you, we appreciate the opportunity, hopefully you can hear us okay.
Yep, perfect, thank you for joining us.
Was there a question there?
Nope, that's just, thank you for joining us, that's it. We can hear you good?
Yeah.
Do you want to tell us?
The, the reason why we approached the board was, we were hoping to play a vintage baseball game at your Soldier's Field on September 6th, so about a month from now. Vintage baseball is similar to modern-day baseball, with the greatest exception being the fact that we play with no gloves. There are some specialized rules, but we have a game scheduled to be played against a Woodstock Hilltop, it's from Woodstock, Connecticut, and as it turns out, Douglas is situated almost directly in between Holliston and Woodstock, which makes it a great destination for both of us. I'm from Holliston originally, I've played baseball growing up through Worcester County, and I have to admit, I was never familiar with Soldier's Field, which surprised me when I learned about it because of the movie, simply because it has the old-time grandstand with the press box up above, and, you know, really suits the Mudville Baseball Club's needs. And so there again, we're here to answer any questions you might have, and we, we entertain them.
The person that comes to my mind, as with any who's in public, now
Did you say insurance?
Yeah, just a question, if it's, if it's a requirement
Ross, take that mic.
Yeah.
I provided insurance document with my introductory letter, we're a member of the Vintage Baseball Association, and have insurance available to us through them.
Yep, very good.
To the last page of our packet.
Very good, question answered.
Guys, as a, the guy who spent a fair amount of time down at Soldier's Field coaching for the better part of 15 years or so, I'll tell you, I think you've stumbled into a beautiful baseball field, and we welcome you.
Well, I tell you, I drove out there about a month ago, prior to going to the Town Hall, and was sort of blown away, and what makes it especially neat for me is, Biano played for Oxbridge in the old Blackstone Valley League, and would have certainly played at that field, and in fact, about 10 years ago, the town, I believe it was the Douglas Historical Society, had an exhibition on the Blackstone Valley League in Blackstone, and a friend and I went out there one Saturday and saw the exhibit, and I walked away with a Red Sox Yankees 1946 t-shirt from a game that was played there way back when.
Nice, nice.
No, that's good stuff, just not to belabor it, I think it's, all the documentation's there, and you're proven that, you know, the rest of it, we can figure out. What do you need in particular from the field? You're not changing any base paths or anything, everything?
No, the, the only thing we would probably do is paint a white line 40 feet out from home plate, because the pitching is done
That's fine.
underhand, which was done in 1864, and it's relatively easy pitching, but it's, it is underhand, and it's, it is 40 feet.
Yeah, that's
But that's something to ourselves, the rest of it is, nothing needs to be done.
Okay, well, we'll get it nice and groomed for you, to the extent that, it's all driven by volunteers, so, as some seasons are better than others, depending on what we got for volunteer work, but we'll, we'll make the field nice for you.
That's beautiful, we appreciate it.
Just another, another quick question, is the public invited?
Public is more than invited, but, you know, it's kind of funny, anticipation, what sort of questions we might get, you know, they're expecting hundreds of people coming, thousands of people, and it's like, we've staged our own tournaments here in Holliston, and put a lot of public listening into it, and if you take out the players and the families, you end up with 20 people with nothing to do on a Saturday, so, so
We're not expecting a lot of people. We do get, we have played, you know, tournaments here and there, and traveled all over New England, and actually all over the country, go out different places to play. Most recently, we had a game last, this past weekend, over in Hampton, New Hampshire, we probably had 100 people, there were concessions, there was a raffle going on, different things, it was sponsored by the Hampton Historical Society, which was nice. So we do have some, some people who will join, some people who will, if advertised, they'll see it, they'll want to see what it's about. It's a different kind of game, as John said, we have vintage uniforms, and we play with no gloves, so it's a little bit of an attraction, people, you know, find it fun to see, and see how the, the game, and experience how the game used to be played back in the 1860s, before Major League Baseball, so it does draw a few people, but no, not, we're not expecting big crowds, it's essentially mostly family and friends.
You know, Angelo mentioned the fact that we've played around the country, what you've got in front of you, I'm being generous with myself when I say middle age, but you basically have a group of middle-aged guys who are living out a childhood dream in a sense, and we've played from here to Stockton, California, we've played in Canada, we've played in Colorado, and it's been a great journey. If you checked our website out, you might get a few chuckles, but we don't claim to be great ballplayers, but we're great friends of the game.
All about fun.
Yeah.
It's all about fun. I plan on being there.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, yeah, I think, you know, there's the baseball organization, softball organization, the rec commission, and a lot of the other youth sports, and town moderator and stuff like that can definitely, you know, share the, you know, the event, and keep, keep it in people's calendars and stuff like that, because I think, you know, it might spark a lot of interest, people seeing, you know, the old-time way that was played, and even if they get a chance to see it once, you know, and locally, could bring out a good, good little crowd, so. Pretty much.
Yeah, this is but the first hello, we'll hopefully build a nice, long tradition of bringing you guys down here and celebrating baseball, but for now, let's just make a motion to approve town property use of the Soldier's Field complex for the Medfield Baseball Club on the date that was specified.
September 6th, 2025, at 4:00 PM.
From noon
Actually, may I interrupt for a little?
Sorry, noon to 4:00.
Just wanted to see, would it be possible, because typically we play like 12:00 or 1:00 PM, and we're, the game is usually an hour and a half to two hours, I would imagine we'll do a nine-inning game, one game, so it's likely within two hours, so if you add maybe some time before and after, maybe three hours total, would it be possible to start either at 12:00 or 1:00 PM?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in your paper, it says from noon until 4:00 PM, so you got, you got a four-hour window.
Yeah, four-hour window.
So that's perfect.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, as, as special as you are, this little slot is but one of maybe two or three games that will be played that day, we'll just schedule everything else around that, so you guys are good. Well, actually, my motion's been made.
Motion.
I'm going to second it.
Seconded by Ross, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? 3-0. All right, appreciate
We look forward to seeing you guys.
Appreciate you guys.
Very good, absolutely.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
September.
Yep. What do we got?
We just send them my cell phone, and then I'll just Thank you.
Okay, next item is minutes, what do you guys want to?
Open space.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, come on.
Sorry. Yep, number seven, review the letter to support the open space grant.
You know, those of us who wear orange shirts are trying not to be not noticed.
This is what I wore riding today, you can line me really easy, safety here.
It's funny, I wore bright green, and my wife's like, what are you wearing? I said, oh, today's construction safety day. And that's every day, but go ahead, sorry.
Okay, Becky Calliger with the Douglas Open Space Committee, this is regarding the Keven property on Southeast Main Street. I'm assuming you guys are all familiar with that property?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little strip of access that opens up into the bigger parcel, it's located almost, almost across the street from Locust, where Locust ties into Southeast.
Yeah, somewhere, it's next to 229.
Yeah.
In between that one and the next house next to them. 60 acres there, so I happened to find at the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program, and that fits our needs quite nicely, so we are going to try for a grant application to get the parking lot done, the access road to the back cleared, and kiosk put up, and we're talking with somebody from the town that said, the parking lot will, it's big enough for like two cars, but they said if we cleared enough in front on the town-owned, right away on the road, so you've got the road, and the town still owns some property between the road and the stone wall, you could probably get another car right there. At the very least, it would at least give you good, clear line of sight up and down the road. So I made up a sample letter, you guys can certainly write your own letters, I didn't know if this would help or not.
It's a good start, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a good start, yeah, I think, I would just, I would just, yeah, I would just probably
Clean it up.
Clean it up a little bit, and tighten it up where the ask is clear for the grant, and, you know, with the purpose and stuff like that.
It's a lot clearer in the
Oh, oh, that's different than the version, okay.
Yeah, I was just giving They have one in their packet.
Yeah, I got, I got a shorter version.
Two had sent me. I would, I can read what I wrote if you want, I just, I changed it up some, so all the support letters from the different boards wasn't the same.
Okay, oh, so, yeah, so if you got a different revision, that'd be great, yeah, if we could
Yeah, I kind of
No, that, that's even better, that, your, your
My thinking was, I reviewed a lot of grants in my time
Okay.
on the Massachusetts Recreational Trails Advisory Board, and it's, little things like that make a difference.
Exactly, exactly, that's when I first, I first read it over, I think I got the 1.0 drafted, that's probably in our packets and stuff like that, I was like, kind of calling a little bit more, explaining a little bit more.
Or maybe just read it for now.
Oh, I can, I'd be happy to read it, but I will take it after.
Yeah.
Okay, to whom it may concern, at its meeting on August 5th, 2025, the Douglas Board of Selectmen voted in full support, I make good assumptions here, of the Douglas Open Space Committee's grant application on behalf of the town of Douglas. This initiative represents a vital step towards expanding public access to one of our town's most scenic and underutilized natural areas. The parcel in question, generously donated to the town nearly a decade ago, remains inaccessible despite longstanding efforts. Located in a rapidly developing part of Douglas that currently lacks any public open space or recreational amenities, this project will offer residents a rare opportunity to connect with nature close to home. The proposed improvements include the creation of a parking area and the clearing of a 450-foot-long, 14-foot-wide trail to ensure a level, handicapped, accessible path to the forest edge. Plans also include signage and a kiosk to provide trail maps and information, enhancing both visibility both visibility and visitor experience. With updated estimates and detailed drawings in place, the project is ready for swift implementation. This grant would allow us to open the second of 10 town owned properties to the public, an exciting milestone in our broader vision for community access and environmental stewardship. We appreciate consideration of the Douglas Open Space Committee's application and the opportunity to bring this project, meaningful project to life.
The 2.0 letter is much better.
Yeah.
2.0 letter is much better, I think, yeah. It definitely called out a lot, so.
Do you guys want to see it at all?
No, I think it struck a perfect tone.
Yep.
And we're working with the new John, John?
Yep.
Yeah, to get all the information to him, so he can, I guess he can be the one that submits it.
Oh, nice.
Okay, that's excellent. All right. Can, any other questions from the board?
I'd make a motion that upon a grammatical review, just to dot all i's and cross t's, that we have Les or Matt on our behalf sign the letter of support for the proposed hometown grant application.
Okay. All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0. Move forward. Appreciate your time.
I think the only thing I want to do on that letter is put, um, a Keven Conservation Property to identify the piece of property. I was just thinking that that wasn't in there.
Yeah, you should, you should probably attach, um, you, you could probably attach like, um, the assessor kind of.
Overview.
Overview of it, yeah.
Yes, that will have maps, pictures and everything like that, but I think on the fall.
Yeah.
It's interesting you say that there's no open space in that, facilities in that part of the town, and it's totally true. You think about it, it's, yeah. And I think that's great.
Yeah, but you could open up some walking trails or something like that for folks that, because that street gets very busy with a lot of people walking and running and.
Yeah, there are some existing trails there, and we've mapped out some possible connections to make expansions. But so we have, we have phases.
That's excellent.
So we're working on it.
Appreciate all the work.
I saw you walking in the woods the other day and I thought to myself, thank goodness that we've got you doing these things. Really? It's awful. It's incredible.
Definitely.
I like the outdoors.
Yep. No, appreciate the help.
In orange. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I'll work on this tomorrow and we'll get it to you guys, correct?
Okay. Uh, number eight, meeting minutes. If you guys are okay, we could wait till our next meeting, but it's up to you. You guys want to?
We do June 3rd.
You want us to do the June 3rd?
With a revised minute.
Okay.
Tim requested.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. How did that land? Where are we? What number is that? Five? Yeah.
Yeah, because we hopped around a lot.
Let's rec. Yes, number five.
Jeez, Lisa, you did all this? Thank you. I did, it might be over the top, but.
It's what you said.
I know.
It's what you wanted.
And everyone at home is just going to have to look these minutes up if they want to know.
Yeah.
I assume, I assume Mr. Fitzpatrick's okay with that?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Well, we've got, uh, three out of five here. If we want to.
If you prefer to wait, that's.
I'm open either way, if you guys want to.
What if we prefer to wait, but we're not wasting another treat? Everyone give up their minutes for next packet.
Okay.
Right? And let's do that. We'll gloss over that.
I think we could approve the, the June 30th minutes, since there's three out of four that are attending. I think the only thing I remember is that on number six, that Dan W. did say that this was the best board, selectmen board that he's presented in front of.
I didn't do these.
But don't worry about it, we'll leave that one out.
Don't bastardize my concerns.
Yeah. I second that.
Oh, all right. You don't want to mend that then.
Yeah.
I was going to be humble.
It's on tape.
Let's do it.
That's, that's.
It's all good. It's all good. No, it's, um, they're, they're very accurate, they're good.
Are you skipping them? I'm just confirming.
If you guys want to do the, the June 30th, there's three out of four of us here, we can vote in favor of that or if you're not, we could, yeah, go to the next.
To keep the wheels of democracy going, I will make a motion to approve the June 30th minutes as presented.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion by Tim, uh, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for the June 30th minutes? All right, let's move forward. Okay, next item, authorization for the town administrator to sign the USPS lease for 331 Main Street. Possible votes.
We have a post office.
So, a long time ago, when we were talking about whether or not to renew this lease, I threw it out there that it was up to elected officials and others that had good connections in town to sort of test the waters and see if people really wanted the post office to stay there or if we should make a municipal use of the building. And I don't think there was anyone who thought we needed to change the use of the building and everybody was pretty territorial about having their P.O. box and everything else right where it is. So there being no support really to move the facility. You know, I don't know if you've ever negotiated with the United States Postal Service. It's not really the most creative bunch of thinkers, flexible people. I think with Selectman Fitzpatrick gave me some information about recent lease rates in other towns nearby, post office. And we were able to present that to postal service to get an increase in the rent. So we went from 51 a year to just about 79. And if they renew their option, it'll go up to 82. So we got a little bit of an inflator in there for, which had not been done in the prior lease, there was no inflator. So we got a little bit of progress. You know, our experience as a landlord varies a lot by whoever the postmaster is. Been through quite a few postmasters in the last five or six years. I think we have a new person who is maybe coming back or, yeah, back and forth, but, um, I, I think our relationship with the most immediate past postmaster was testy at times. Just think it was a difficult personality. But I think we're going to come off that and be back to the harmony in the neighborhood. So a lot of this is boilerplate. I don't have a chance to negotiate every fine point, and so I didn't. I just want to get the numbers upright so that we could do, make some small improvement to the revenue for the town. So there you have it. I want to recommend that we do this, and it is August, so.
Yeah.
I think the term is Janu, it's over at the end of December.
So, I hear you write, because of the due diligence of Selectman Fitzpatrick, we're plus 29,000?
Yeah.
Because of that, that's no small thing.
That's good.
I would make a motion that we authorize Matt to sign the USPS lease for 331 Main Street, Douglas Mass, 01516.
I will second.
Okay. Motion by Tim, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0. No, I think the, done been a lot of good work there, so. All right, next item, we've got the first reading of the Board of Selectmen Policies and Procedures Amendments.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that we're running a little short tonight, I think we probably can just bounce the town administrative report and maybe keep the printed materials here for Lisa.
Yeah, sounds good. We'll move forward with that. I agree. So on to number 11, Town Administrators' Reports and Goals. I would skip over that one as well. I'm going to go on to number 12, Town Administrator's Report for August 5th.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, we are nearing some of the end of the digging here on Depot Street. We've got some work to do, I think, out here in the front to get the municipal center set up for its new connection. We are going to have some work to do in this building, and just want to flag this for folks to understand that in order to have sprinklers on the second floor, we may need some additional equipment and some space in the basement for all those risers to go and the valves and other things. And if you go down there now for your grand tour of what is basically the engine room of the Titanic, there's just not a lot of wiggle. And so it's also a little bit concerning that the initial, or let's call it legacy electrical service connection for this building, which dates to 1925, with those great big Westinghouse breakers that wouldn't trip if you hit them with a sledgehammer, are on the same wall as the sprinklers, you know, main valves, which may not be the most intelligent configuration of the mechanical room for this building. So it has always been a thought that that box has to go out. And we need to have, you know, modern service connections at the end of the hallway where all the work was done for the schools on the second floor. And, you know, we may have to accelerate that in a couple of years to accommodate the need to sprinkle the second floor. So that's just a quick flag that I don't want anybody to say we didn't talk about it as soon as it was relevant, relevant information, but me and Bob Sullivan were digging around down there in the twilight. And, yeah, there's no, there's no here, there. There is a very, very, very cool old battery charger down there with what is called a tungar or tonrad, I think it's a tungar bulb made out of tungsten and some other horrible chemicals that we would admit to have in this building. This bulb actually wasn't for light, it was, but it had a tungsten element and it was to oscillate the charging cycle on two 9 volt batteries. So technology here in the Memorial High School backup power.
You may, you may have to give tours of the basement to some, some of us.
Maybe, maybe the archivist and other historical society members.
Okay, that's a little bit of the basement downstairs.
Just don't brush up against the old foam wires. It's only one and a half volts, but you'll still kind of notice.
Give you a tingle.
Hello, Mr. Edison.
Yeah.
But long story short, you know, and I keep saying this and we'll keep saying it so that it gets through, that patch that's out there is going to be replaced with a semi-permanent patch. No offense to the contractor, but I guess I'll offend them again. You know, they're not winning us over with confidence with the way they're proceeding on the project, so we're going to have to babysit them through this. But we made it abundantly clear that this municipal center is very busy. So our expectation is that the patch will have nice even cut lines. So there'll be saw cut out past the existing, so you'll have nice parallel lines running up and down. The compaction will be as good as possible and, you know, we'll, we'll try to keep the pavement smooth, especially right up to town hall, because we're going to be running plows and stuff through the winter. And just a reminder to folks in the public, we cannot pave curb to curb immediately after doing trench work. We have to let it settle for at least six months, but at least a freeze thaw cycle so that we know exactly that the underlayment, that when we finally pulverize and replace this road, that everything will be graded properly. You don't want to waste your money. I think one thing that people need to be aware of is the scope. So we will have brand new granite curb all the way from Main Street up to the municipal center and new sidewalks. So the visual presentation of coming up to town hall is going to be quite different and a lot safer for people who walk. Some, some of these concrete panels out here are pretty topsy-turvy right now, so. I'm sure there'll be some work around tree roots. I'm sure there, you know, might even disappoint some people because we can't really disturb too many tree roots without hurting the tree, but these sidewalks have served you well for a really long time, so that, you know, we're going to replace them with like to like.
Just the, the old curbing that's there, that's going to get you.
We're saving it and we're, we're going to try to figure out how we can configure it for another use right in town.
That'd be excellent.
That's the plan. You don't throw granite away these days.
No.
Some of it's beat up pretty bad, but.
No, it's, it's definitely ideal to repurpose in any, you know, situation for the town and stuff like that. I can't, yeah, again, there's nothing on the forefront, but there's always a use for it down the road, so it's definitely.
So the order of operations in the spring is, once we pulverize and reset the base, then we'll pour the base pavement, then we'll reset the curb, then we'll pour the sidewalks, then we'll pour the finished curb on the pavement. So that'd be the very last thing that happens. We had a discussion at your last meeting, and I've got this down to a science now. It's only one handout, so I'll take the top one and pass it along.
Science.
A couple of selectmen asked for, you know, some visibility into the budget forecast. And this is a, a giant workbook that every member of the select board does have access to on your computer. So it is in the SharePoint, it is in the Select Board's SharePoint address. I just, all I do is I change the fiscal year every year and the title of the document. I don't, for version control purposes, I don't really do much more than that. I add columns in order to make sure that the forecast period is a full five years. And I also keep all of the historical data. We can actually go back a lot further than this. We can go all the way back to 2014 with historical data, but I like to have, you know, a good five years in the past so you can see the trends. This top page is the critical assumptions page. So when you're in the workbook, this is called the control panel. And by far, the most important part of the budget process, and it doesn't usually get settled fully until BVT has a number for us and we have a number for school bus transportation, usually in February or mid-March, because these are the biggest accounts that are most volatile. So we can talk about what's in the detail and all these line items and paper clips and staplers and other things of the departments. If you know the personnel spending for the town, and our payroll is close to 80% of the spend, and these other major accounts, you've pretty much completed the budget exercise. I will draw your attention to what I'm currently assuming for fiscal '27. And it starts off with the top line is that our health insurance account would go up by 12%. The next key assumption, still in the same column, we have another four to the schools, to the Douglas Public Schools. That was a pace of increase that was set to meet our contractual obligations to the bargaining units that we finish contracts with. I'm going out on a limb with BVT and holding them at a four and a half and school bus transportation at a five, with new growth set right around 300,000, which is aggressive. And right now, if this was the budget, we would be in the hole 409,361. So as I go through this part of the exercise heading into the fall, we're going to be focused on those bigger assumptions, right? And seeing if there's anything we can do to address those numbers. So just for giggles, let me tell you this, that if school bus transportation were to flatline, if we had a 0% increase, which is not an unreasonable thing to try to do, given that last year was a 23% increase.
Yep.
And we can get health insurance from a 12% increase to an eight, then the deficit number would be under 200,000, be about 184. Now, for expectation setting purposes, if I come into the budget season and I'm anything $200,000 or less, I can fix it. Right? So I can tweak, expense accounts I can tweak, maybe not filling a position as quickly as necessary. We have a certain amount of natural turnover in our, in our staff. We have a certain amount of natural turnover in our staff. And if I really had to, I could look at COLAs or other things as sort of like a, not even Plan B, but like Plan C or Plan D. But I know what one point in the COLA costs, so I know if I can get it under a hundred thousand or closer to seventy grand, I don't probably need to touch that.
That's fair.
So that's generally how I approach it. What's a little bit different here is that usually when I do a four-year or five-year forecast, the first couple of years are right around break even in the out years because we're so conservative with revenues that you see a deficit, and it's just natural. As we get closer to it, the deficit gets smaller and smaller, and then the revenue picture clears up so that we can stay in balance. We're starting to push some pretty big numbers, though, in the not-too-distant future. And that's a function of, again, our already high rate of spending on the education side of the budget, but I thought I would just do some quick averages so that people understand the dynamic. We don't just do the two and a half percent allowed by constitution, state constitution and state laws. We also have, you know, new growth every year. So we have new homes or new commercial entities, and those things contribute to the overall revenue picture. So since 2020, and including my forecast for 2027, the revenues of the town grow at a rate, an average rate of three and a half, three point three percent. Municipal spending over that same time period is three point one percent. And schools is only two point six. So I know we have a dialogue and it's always, oh, the schools, the schools, the schools. The Douglas Public Schools is one of the slowest growing accounts in our budget at two point six percent per average. The town's piece has gone up three point one percent for what? Because we pay for the insurance for the entire town. So health, property, casualty, and retirement costs are all in the municipal budget. So if retirement's going up at nine percent a year, which we have to do to make up the pension shortfall in the fund, then you have the rest of your budget, including your personnel and your expenses, has to come in well under the average in order to hold this average below the rate of increase in revenues. So that, just so folks understand, we've always, even when we've had what looks like a flush revenue budget, the fact is we've always been very conservative and come in under because of things like school bus transportation, which over the comparison period's been up eight point four percent, and BVT has been up by eight point two percent. That is not a sustainable pattern for any of the smaller communities in central Massachusetts, Douglas included. So this year might be the year when we have to start to consider, you know, pretty significant changes in the future so that in five years, we've consolidated government operations to the point, either with regionalization or a different approach here internal to the town, where we can address the overall cost increase. One of the first places you go is the last two pages in terms of forecast. It is the most meaningful way for anybody to have an impact on the budget, and that's the revenues. So the town spends, just for giggles, did I throw to a bottom line? Just for fiscal twenty-six, our budget's thirty-six point eight million. Of that thirty-six point eight million, we raise from the levy twenty-three million. Another important part of the budget process in Douglas is to recognize that you have a very significant reliance upon state aid and revenue transfers from the Commonwealth that are more, revenue sharing is not so much grants. So the taxpayers pick up twenty-three million out of the thirty, almost thirty-nine, thirty-seven million dollars. You've got some debt exclusions that pull a number. We balance those out later. We have local receipts of one point eight million. The cherry sheet, all the positive side is ten point six million. Now, we have some miscellaneous revenues. You know, we sweep the ambulance account, we have the postal revenue from the lease. So that's how the revenue is structured, and you'll see, there's not a lot of wiggle room in any of these numbers. It really is new growth. New growth is the engine that establishes what you're going to be able to do as a community going forward. Now, this year, we're coming in really tight, somewhat lower than we had anticipated, around two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Historically, that's a great number for Douglas, but over the last five years, it's one of the lowest numbers that we've had because we didn't have any big commercial hits to the account this year. It was mostly residential construction and residential improvements to existing properties. So that's the reality of budgeting in Douglas. So if you ever have any question about the projections, you can either go to the spreadsheet or ask me, but I thought we'd go over this since we talked about it in public last time. Are there any off-the-top questions about?
I'll go first. One, Matt, I appreciate you sharing this with myself and the rest of the board members and going into this detail this way. I think I'm in alignment with you where being conservative and hoping for good headwinds is the best way to go about when you do a budget. I'm more concerned with when folks expect the headwinds and they don't happen, and now you've got a bigger problem because of that. So I do appreciate you sharing this and the enlightenment of this, I think will help everybody, you know, who reviews this and takes a look, give a better understanding where we're hoping for wins and headwinds and revenue opportunities and growth. You know, we're taking our swings to economic development and trying to bring more to the table, and all we can do is continue to take the swings and work with people that come here that want to do something in Douglas or in the state. And I know it's challenging. You know, I think Douglas has a lot to offer, and finding the right partner is always the key, but seeing if they want to make the commitment in this environment, so. That's off the top of my head comments. Ross, I'll give it to you, or Tim?
How often are you in on the spreadsheet?
Pretty much daily.
Is it?
I mean, this time of year, not so much, because I'm looking for big chunks at this point.
Yeah.
So this bottom line that I have for fiscal twenty-seven is keeping the highway position that we recently filled to give them six. We had one leave, so we're back down to five. This includes not filling that.
Yep.
Okay, so that's not available. The postal service lease is not in here, but that's only going to get you twenty-nine thousand dollars, so.
The change that we did on our casualty and property insurance, is that reflected in here yet? Okay, good.
So that informs your current year projected surplus of one hundred and fifty-six thousand. So the year we're in, fiscal twenty-six, that just began, I have this with a pretty healthy turnback.
Okay.
Or at your disposal for special.
Yep. Okay.
Where did you find the paper? Was this eleven by seventeen?
Yes.
Is that? Yeah.
We have an ample supply of it because I can only print out the budget on that. I don't think anybody else uses it. Maybe Gene.
I'm glad that it's not on twenty-four by thirty-six.
Well, yeah, no, it's starting to get silly.
That's next.
No, we'll never do that.
Speaking of which, I have two reams of eight and a half by fourteen paper that there's no chance in heck I'm going to use. I will bring those to you for, yeah, that's a good one. Matt, just a question on, it looks like it's in 2025, the last page, committed funds section. The six twenty-five, four twenty-nine is a considerable outlier from the rest where it looks like we basically budget about a hundred K.
Yep.
What's the story behind that?
So that's the overlay?
Yeah.
So we had to set aside sufficient funds to cover an abatement for the cubes at Gilboa if they were to.
That's right.
Challenge their value and be victorious in that. They did put in a challenge because that's kind of pro forma. When you do a big commercial building, you're just going to challenge the tax assessors with the hope you get a little bit of relief. They did challenge it. All of the big buildings in Uxbridge and other neighboring communities actually came in higher than cubes at Gilboa, so we don't think they're going to get any headway on their tax appeal.
Okay.
But because the appeal is not done yet.
Yeah.
That overlay cannot be released by the finance director until the appeal is complete. And so it would not happen in fiscal twenty-five. It'll have to happen in fiscal twenty-six. But that's why that's there. Generally speaking, the overlay really funds your senior exemptions, your veterans exemptions, anything that you have in your exemptions, and some small number of abatements every year.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
So at some point, we'll have a healthy free cash blip.
Yeah.
But it might, something else that is normally there for free cash might not be. So that has a tendency, it's a whole one-time revenue, so you try to keep it at a steady level and not have too many blips there.
Yeah, don't get too excited about that just yet.
Well, that's why I use one-time revenues for capital purchases because then you're counting on it for it.
Yeah, it's a problem with communities where they take that, the one-time blip, and they put it in, you know, and they expect, you know.
There's a total lack of discipline.
Correct.
It really comes home to roost.
It seems like they think it's going to come next year and the year after, and it's like, wait a second, it was a one-time blip, and you can't put that in their budget. So I do appreciate all the work you do in this, and this is definitely helpful for everybody who can take a look at it.
Absolutely.
So what I don't print out because it takes too much paper is the account-by-account detail by every department.
Yeah, that's.
I personally don't think that's very helpful for folks. It's helpful for me to trim. I'll give you a couple of ideas on where, if I had to, if I had to close a hundred, where am I going to look, just so you have an idea. This year, we're very heavy on licenses for our different software packages. My only feedback to department heads is make sure you're using it. If you're not using it for the cost, if we're not getting value out of it, I'm going to cut it because I just, I don't want to cut anybody and I don't want to reduce the COLA. It's already going to be far below the rate of inflation, so I just don't want to go there. I'm going to go make sure the assets that we purchase are actually being fully utilized. I think I have some hope that our Zoom phone capability and some other changes that are being made at the nine-one-one position, we may be able to drop one of our more expensive licenses that we use for communication amongst first responders. It's called I am responding. We may not need that anymore, and there's some money to be saved there right now. It's in the budget, I could take it out. But those are the kinds of things I'd be looking to do first and foremost. We are still in a ridiculously beneficial electricity contract. I think we're out to bid for fuel oil, and we'll see what those, how that comes in. Those prices have been fairly low.
Yeah.
So we're just, there's just not a lot of low-hanging fruit from places to go get savings, but we'll keep trying at the usual suspects. But right now, licenses are very much, and that, if I really had to, you know, if there are low-volume users on the town's Microsoft Office presence, I might just cut them because as much as I like SharePoint, if it's not, if SharePoint's not being utilized by people who have time-wide email addresses, then we just need to take your account away because it's just a lot of money. It's just getting more expensive every year. MS, Microsoft makes it really hard.
Yeah, do you have a list of all the software that the town uses and stuff like that? Because it's always worked while the, because sometimes the IT department can pull a thing and say, you know, last time used, and you can be like, oh, this hasn't been used, nobody's accessed it since two thousand and nineteen.
Not kidding when I say we do look at that almost as frequently as we look at.
Okay. It's one of the things that we've done on the corporate side, and it's shocking of, I mean, that you can come across a lot of things like that and.
And it's easy to do. And Hal's not here, so I don't want to go too doge Douglas, but I got dinged from Microsoft the other day. That's a secondary thing. It's a hundred and thirty-eight bucks. I'm like, I don't even know where to log in to get this thing off, so licensing.
So that's where I'm at with that. This is a nice segue into the next conversation, which is, we're getting some indications of some things around economic development really firming up, and it's a mixed blessing. And that's where I'm going to put it. You don't get to pick. I guess that's what I learned as an economic development director. You don't get to pick. The market decides where it wants to be, and so you need to be in a sweet spot so the market will at least put you in the decision set. But the market will generate what the market generates. And I can just remember trying to convince people in OneSocket that Boeing wasn't going to move to OneSocket to build airplanes. That it just wasn't going to happen. And those old mill buildings, if the recycling industry, everything you can imagine, styrofoam, roof shingles, those, that weird plastic that you get when you have plants, you know, potted pots, there's a market, there's a market for all of that stuff. And that really low rent and low need for utilities and low need for parking spots, just need space to stack all this garbage, and it was all fire load unfortunately in a lot of those mill buildings, but that's the kind of customer you're going to get. But activity generates activity and generates more interest. So the last thing you want to lose is momentum. So in the warehouse business, we just don't want to tolerate long-term vacancies. And we want to make sure we fill the space, and it may not necessarily be, you know, your A-list that's going to, you know, have a giant Swedish fish cannon and blow candy all over the town. You know, warehouses mean trucks. Trucks mean, you know, lots of traffic volume all over the place, and we can do the best we can to enforce our existing development agreement, which is if the traffic counts go up by X percent, then CRG, not the tenant, CRG will be on the hook to give us a bunch of money to widen our streets and to signalize or to signage or whatever else we need. And if that triggered, it gets triggered, it gets triggered. But we're better off doing development at the level, you know, Bob Minarik will tell you that he, his current value of his portfolio of every single lead, he's working really hard on, so we're way past the initial inquiry. We're talking about honest-to-God people with purchase and sales agreements and researching their permitting requirements at one and a half billion. And so we just need a fraction of that to radically change this.
Yeah.
Completely change it and go back to the path we were on, trying to get a facilities director and filling all the spots at Highway and keeping the schools competitive. So if you want those things to happen, you don't want to have to make sacrifices to your service levels, and we can't be too fussy about who sticks their nose up and says, we want to, we want to be in that building. So I think that's kind of where I'm at. I'm definitely not, it's a very bad idea for me to venture who it is at this point.
All things in time, but you mentioned the CRG agreement. That's our stick to really force them to take a right out of their building?
Yeah, I mean, they agreed to it, right? And it was ratified by the select board sitting at the time, and it was all set up around triggers. So we did all of the baseline traffic counts that we needed to, to establish that starting point.
Yep.
And I think the next thing we would do is after they have an active lease, I think it's a six-month and then a one-year traffic study. And if they're, if they trigger those percentage increases, then it's about a quarter million So that's where we're at. I think there's a lot of progress being made there. I think poor Bob has worn out after this last week. The last thing I want to talk about during my report period is we've been working an awful lot behind the scenes on successfully getting out of our health insurance group and starting a new one and doing a little bit of research. And just, this is a, I'm going to hold it up for you to look at. I don't want to pass it around, but this is the inflation trend in healthcare, not health insurance, but healthcare in general. And it's a little bit deceiving because it's the rate of increase. So it looks like it's going down there for a while, but these rates of increase are still really aggressive.
So the increase is actually marked as a downward point?
Yeah, so from eleven point nine percent in two thousand and seven to seven percent in two thousand and twenty-one, it's going to make it look like it's down, but it's still, that's really fast growth. It's far outstripping the economy and general inflation in the economy. So for the last three years, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, they're eight and a half, that's the trend. We've been at zeros. So the time was going to come when we were not going to be able to avoid an adjustment. So that's where we're at. I think that what we did this year was, because they wouldn't give us our money back from the group that we had in surplus, we took a zero, which means we're going to finish the year for the year itself in deficit. But we chewed away at the surplus that they weren't going to give us. So we basically, we played with house money this year. But this year compared to last year, we didn't go up. We actually spent less, which is really unusual. The reason for that is very complex. We actually have a much higher census this year than we did, so we have more people taking the town benefit than took it in the past. We're just that much more, less costly. We have a younger set because we've had a lot of turnover, so we've hired a lot of younger folks that use the system less. And a lot of the prevention programs, I think, are being utilized and actually saving money. So if we had done anything other than a zero, we would have been fine. We wouldn't have had a twelve, right? We wouldn't have had a 12, right? Followed by potentially another 12.
Yep.
But we would have been fighting over getting a surplus out of an entity that doesn't have a lot of money. So it just made sense. At this point, they have been funding our runout of claims from their treasury and that's fine. That's fine by me. That'll just, that continues to bring the total surplus number down. So maybe the check they cut us in the end, instead of being 1.4 million, might only be a quarter of a million. But that's good because they're much more likely to cut that check and then we can be done with it.
Yep.
Yeah, we're whole.
And we're whole. And, you know, we got what we paid for basically out of the system. Well, this is a very scary trend and the other scary trend that's going on, I don't want to wade into this as a political conversation, I want to wade into it as an economic and financial discussion. Tariffs cost money. Companies and countries don't pay tariffs, consumers do. For a while, your bigger, wealthier retailers will take it on the chin and they'll absorb the cost of the tariff with the hope that policy will change with time. And that's a very real thing. That could happen. So if some of these disputes, political disputes are resolved at the level of Washington, the tariffs will come back down, the Bakes, the Amazons, the Walmarts, the Targets, they will have absorbed that hit and the consumer won't feel it. And the other thing they're doing is they're building, don't doubt this for a second. I'll prove it if I need to. I'll go to their Form 10K to show you, but there are massive increases in inventory because until the tariff is actually imposed and collected, they might, they can't have empty space in their warehouses. If the item's not perishable, they might as well store it and sell it at the price that they had it and then they're not absorbing the cost of the tariff. But all indications are, if we're going to play around with numbers like this, 25% and 50% tariffs, you will eventually pay it out of your pocket. And for the town, what does that mean? Things that we buy that have semiconductor chips in them. So that includes any automobile, any computing equipment. A lot of the stuff we stick in an ambulance that has a printout tells you how you're doing. You're not so good if you're in the ambulance. Now, all that stuff becomes phenomenally expensive. And when it comes to steel and aluminum from Canada, we're talking our dump trucks, our fire engines. So I was talking to a firefighter in Cumberland, a Cumberland district, fire district is out for a fire engine and they're looking at five years and a million dollars. So our last truck, we got it within a year after ordering it and it was 750 grand. So the markets are changing. So the things that we buy as a business entity, we just get that more expensive. And when it comes to wage demands, it just filters right through, right? So everybody's living in a world where all the consumer goods are that much more expensive. They come, and their health insurance is getting more expensive. They come to the table with certain expectations around salaries. You can negotiate that to a reasonable level, which is, it's still going to look like an increase. So that's the headwinds we're up against. We could sit here in six months' time and maybe have more clarity and it won't be so grim. It's just that it's, it's hard to think that we're not headed for a challenging time. We are of course caught between a state government that leans one way and federal government that leans the other. And said it before, that's like the worst place a municipal government entity can be because we got a bunch of people in Boston that want us to plug everything in. Administration of Washington that wants to take the plugs off the wall. And, you know, who's going to win this? It all depends on who has longer legs and better political throughput, but we're the ones that have to try to comply with this guy and then comply with that guy and try to sort out who's going to be the winner so that we're not caught with the policy that we can't support or fines or anything else that go along with it. So it's not going to be pretty, but we'll do it, we'll get through it. It'll work out just fine. I think there's a very, very strong movement in the Commonwealth, and I'll close with this, very responsible and respected people putting a lot of pressure on the administration saying that your goals are unattainable and you need to stop talking about this stuff. Like, all you need to do is tap your foot on the ground, cross your arms in front of your chest and you're going to all of a sudden have this amazing clean environment. It just, transition takes longer than that and really, I've said it before, I'll say it again, our future is hybrid. We've got to figure out how to make hybrid models work. When we talk to state officials right now about what we're trying to do in Douglas for economic development, we don't talk about trying to shoot for the moon and do all sorts of really whiz-bang stuff. It'd be nice. The reality is if we can come up with a really great proposal for jobs and revenue and then try to backfill it with some quote-unquote green initiatives that reduce the carbon footprint of that building or of that enterprise to a level that's far below where it would be if it was based on petroleum and old-fashioned ways of doing things, that's actually forward thinking because it's real, it's tangible, it's something an investor is willing, an investor from anywhere across the country would be willing to put money into. That's what you want to be and turn the tanker slowly enough so that it doesn't break up from the effort of turning. So that's, we're trying to find that sweet spot. I think we're doing okay so far, but it is a battle.
You know, the days of an allowance at 280,000, I remember...
214.
Yeah, 214.
That's when we bought that thing.
Exactly.
It was 214.
Yeah, yeah. And now, now, now they're well over 400 plus. And, you know, homes, new homes, you know, being required to have EV charging setups in them, I mean...
Is that a requirement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, along with ERV systems, I mean, and triple-pane windows and then they take out, they undercut all the electrical, the incentive program for going with heat pumps. So all those rebates go away too, so...
Yeah, you can't have your kick kneel.
Yeah, so it's, still the incentives have gone away to kind of make the shift, but I appreciate, I appreciate your report. All right. So number 13, any items anticipated prior to the meeting, the 48 hours?
I got a little something. On a lighter note, I guess, this probably has more to do with master plan than anything else, a little off-topic, but an email went around for the Riverwalk property off of B Street, the north side of the river on B Street, from Mr. Jackman. And I just want to give him a big thank you. He's confirmed he will donate that property for the Riverwalk. And I just want to genuinely thank him for doing that.
No, yeah, I did, you know, hear that he was leaning towards doing that and I'm glad that he kind of stepped forward in that way. I think it's going to be a good opportunity for the town and as well as the area. A lot of big benefits there.
That's an important first step.
Yeah.
It is, still kicking dirt, but it's a first step, absolutely.
So I was given notice of this and I passed it along to town council who responded with a list of next steps the town will want to take, so move the ball forward.
Yeah, good. Yeah, and the only other thing I'd say on the open session side is I had the opportunity to look at other towns' meetings and stuff like that and they kind of put this under like the roundtable discussion, which is kind of cool, the open session and stuff like that. The other thing is, is probably maybe in a future agenda item is the 250th anniversary. Maybe we should discuss that a little bit more and what, since we've got a lot of things going on with the baseball downtown and stuff like that, could be a way to kind of coordinate for the 250 next year and start ball rolling and stuff like that. Because I think there's a lot of volunteerism and a lot of opportunities to kind of maybe put some type of event around and maybe target a date that would be ideal, you know, for the town and stuff like that. So just float that out there.
And don't forget that Veterans Day, this building turns 100. I'm grateful to the bones of this building for staying up. Why my poor little decoration here and there draw attention to Win Schuster and all of the efforts to make the building a great building. I did have something, Mr. Chairman. So on Friday, so well after your agenda was posted, we got notice from the superintendent of schools of that first not-so-aggressive round of reviews from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, for the accelerated repair program. Douglas was, we're still alive, so, you know, they took 90 out of 96 or something like that to get to the next step. Woo-hoo, right?
Who needs a niche? Just kidding everyone.
So that first cut, as a baseball coach, you know what it is, right?
Yeah.
You know, the 15 kids are trying out, the 12 fastest can stay and make them run and then inevitably, one of those three slowest kids is your best pitcher and you have to throw the test away. But in any case, so we're still, our next step is to document the source of funds that would be available for the Douglas project to get to hard numbers and move forward. One of those requires some design work upfront, which typical of any product, project, and then project funding. Everybody who's engaged in this process knows where we are in the budget process for the year. So Gene and I had a conversation where we have, we have three potential sources, we have more than three, but three that are immediately available for discussion for the November special time meeting. We have two projects that had a remaining balance, so the project is done and the project needs to be closed out. One's at 21,000, the other's about 9,000. These are past projects that were left open. One of them is actually, that 21,000 is a school roof project that closed quite some time ago or was finished quite some time ago. And so that's dirty. And we have a tank replacement that the capital committee approved and town meeting has approved recently for 140,000. I don't know if that tank project's going to go forward or not.
Okay.
That's a conversation we'll have with the school committee and the superintendent and the business manager, but some form of those three sources of funding should be more than enough to support the conceptual design, which is what is necessary, behind about a half-million-dollar project. So then we would go to spring town meeting and try to approximate what our share of the project would be if we were approved. Remember, some of these can be as high as 50%, most of them will be lower. But if it's a half-million-dollar project and we have to, you know, come up with even 300 of that, there are some, there are some good things that we can do to put that in place. We've been very, very conservative about considering aspects of free cash to be encumbered because we did not know what was going to happen. We didn't know that MSHG was going to pay our runout, so we left free cash, efficient free cash, to pay our runout, which could have been a lot of money in the event that MSHG did not honor the joint purchasing agreement. So that money was encumbered, it's not going to be spent because the group has been funding. We also have something we'll be discussing in executive session because there's been some developments there where we might be freeing up some money that town meeting has previously transferred and approved that we may not actually spend or may or may not spend. So I'm kind of hopeful about positioning the town. Again, this is for the primary school, the roof is really well past its rated life. So this was an issue when we went up for insurance. They identified this as something we really need to get on and so it would be nice to go back to those, to our liability carrier and say, not our liability, our casualty carrier, and say, look, you guys wanted us to put in a roof, we have got the funding, we're going to do the project in the next 12 months, 12 to 18 months. So I think maybe the superintendent was looking for a vote, but I don't think we need a vote tonight at the select board because I think the real issue here is money that's already been transferred out of free cash and appropriated for projects, is sitting in an account, just needs town meeting vote to be approved. So we'll, once Gene approves the draft, we'll come back.
Cue it up.
That was in the last 48, it's very important because I think it's going to be discussed at school committee level for a while.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. Ross, you're up.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to move to executive session for the discussion of interest in real property at 16 and 18 Riteell Road and to reconvene and to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Okay, second motion by Ross, second by Tim, roll call vote.
Smith, aye.
Stevens, aye.
Bone, an aye.
All right.